Going to go ahead and call this October 6, 2025, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. Thanks, everyone, for attending in person. We also have some folks joining us remotely via Zoom. So thanks very much for attending. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask former Mayor Ray Boxich to please lead us tonight, Ray, if you don't mind.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Few things have changed since you sat up here. Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it. We'll move on to communications from the public. We do have three public hearing advertised for this evening, so if you're here to speak to those hearings, please wait until I call those individual items. Otherwise, anything to bring to the attention of the council? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is...
One sec, Dave. I don't think that is on.
My name is David Martin. I live at 816 Texas Avenue here in Whitefish. First, I'd like to thank you all for your representation, for your volunteerism. I know it comes at some personal cost. That being said, I'm here to tell you I think you blew a recent vote. I'd like to read a letter to the editor, or at least part of a letter to the editor. It was not written by me, but it reflects exactly my position. Title is "Approval of a Bar: A Bad Precedent." Oh, by the way, this was in the Whitefish Pilot on September 17th. The council's approval of a bar in Kemosabe sets a bad precedent. Council members Ben Davis and Giuseppe Catabiano said at a recent candidate forum that they supported approval of the conditional use permit because they don't want to pick winners and losers, and they feel obliged to approve most CUPs to avoid lawsuits. Candidate Nathan Dugan expressed a similar sentiment and said he would have approved the CUP. These comments demonstrate a fundamental misunderstanding of the city's responsibilities. A CUP is not a property right. Activities listed as permissive uses are either prohibited entirely or allowed only if identified as a conditional use and approved by council. As such, a CUP is an exception to property restrictions. It is a special allowance the city has broad discretion to deny or approve, so long as the city does not act in an arbitrary or capricious manner. Having set this precedent, the city could face lawsuits if other retail stores seek to operate a bar but are denied. Under Whitefish Code Section 117 EJ7E, the council must find that the proposed use is compatible with the established community character. Whitefish's established community character is not one of combination retail stores/bars. People shop at retail stores to purchase items, not to hang around and drink. Families and others who do not want to be exposed to alcohol consumption can simply avoid going into bars, but they may not be able to avoid going into retail stores selling what they need. Okay, so there's more, but I'm going to cut out more. It was signed by Andre LaRose, Whitefish, and, as I say, it reflects my feelings also. First off, Councilwoman Norton and Councilman Cornell, thank you for voting against this CUP. As to the rest of you, I think you sold out the residents of Whitefish to business. I find it interesting that one of you has an election board that says "Honor Our Residents." I don't have any idea what residents you think you're honoring by letting a retail store sell liquor in their business. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Ray.
Ray Boxich, 223 Columbia Avenue, Whitefish. Thank you, council and mayor, for allowing me to talk to a letter that I have sent to you that you will deal with later on in the meeting, but this is not the first time that we've made this request. This is in regard to the closing of Columbia Avenue on Halloween night, probably from the hours from 4:00 to possibly 9:00. If any of you have been in the neighborhood on Halloween night, you will understand what we're talking about. The amount of trick-or-treaters, kids and adults that walk down our street are phenomenal. We just spent $150 on candy at Costco and don't know if we have enough because they don't put how many are in the bag anymore, so we're just guessing. But a neighbor who does a tally usually tallies right around 1,000 trick-or-treaters each night. Each one of those trick-or-treaters is usually accompanied by two adults, maybe parents, and also grandparents, so there's a ton and ton of people. We get a lot in the neighborhood, but primarily it's on Columbia Avenue. I've tried to do something about this in the past and approached City Hall about it, and the only response that City Hall would give to me two years ago was, "I need to file for a special use permit." I'm not sponsoring Halloween, you know. I really don't want to be held responsible. I don't want to get insurance to do it. I think this is an ongoing thing in the city. And we're not complaining about it. We love it. We encourage it. We decorate our houses. We entice the people to come. So it's not like we're against it in the least. We enjoy doing it. But there's a safety factor. So I never got any further with City Hall than, "You need to file a special use permit." Last year, I tried a different approach and skipped City Hall and just went to the Chief of Police. And Bridger was great. He put more cops on duty, which is great, but that doesn't solve the problem. You could have a cop on every corner, and it doesn't stop the traffic. We've had delivery trucks going through there. We've got cars that drive down, stop, let kids jump out, in and out of the cars. And so the problem isn't crazy people running around. The problem is traffic. If we could close Columbia Avenue and maybe more, I mean, that's a suggestion of doing from Second Street to Sixth Street and the side streets. This is four hours. If you live in our neighborhood and have gone through this summer of street closures, four hours is nothing. We didn't know from day to day, from hour to hour, which street we could drive down to get out of the neighborhood. So I don't really think it's asking a whole lot. This would not close the street to residents. They could still get to their parking places or leave if they had to. It would just stop traffic going down those streets. If we wanted to look at it different, and maybe we do the blocks, a couple blocks on Columbia, a couple blocks on Summers and Park, great, you know, would spread it out even a little more. But the whole thing here is safety. It's an accident waiting to happen. The police were great. One of the policemen standing on the corner last year on Second and, or Third and Columbia's response to the neighbor there was, "This is wild. Why don't they just close the street?" Duh, that's what we've been asking. One of my other neighbors who supports this went to the Public Works Director, and this is the response that we've gotten from Public Works. We do not want to do this for two reasons. Number one, closing off the streets would create a false sense of security, which eventually could make the situation worse. Now, if you can tell me what that means. Stopping the cars from running over somebody is a false sense of security? I don't get it. And then the other response was, "Well, the cars would then park on Pine and Park Street." They may, but Pine and Park Street don't get the traffic. If they want to park there, great, let them park there. The ones we're worried about are the ones that are driving through. So, you know, if you would consider this, we would appreciate it. If you would like us to help you tweak it so that something could work better. I mean, what I put in my letter and other people was a suggestion. It can be done in many different ways, but the main thing is what it's about. And what it's about to us is the safety for the kids and the parents that are out there on Halloween night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Janice McCann at 340 Summers Avenue. It's Halloween again, guys. So I had just had a couple points that Ray didn't make, and one of the reasons is I know that the city doesn't have any problem with closing the streets for the winter carnival or for the parades, for homecoming parade, or, like I said, for construction, all because of safety. So I know it can be done, and we have the ability to do it. We must own the barricades, and the police must be in charge of that. Last year, when I was walking, I took an elderly neighbor that's been dying to go down Columbia and see and everything. It's so dark, and with all the cars, we're forced to stay on the sidewalks, which we have no problem doing, except for the sidewalks are so uneven, and he wasn't able to use mobility aids on the sidewalk. This is an issue. If we had the streets closed, people with walkers or wheelchairs could participate much easier, and they wouldn't be at risk. I was really fearful for a broken hip, so we left. So I would just really appreciate that we could have had a smooth street surface instead. Also, I thought maybe just closing Columbia up to Sixth would be a good idea. Now that Sixth is one way, it'd be really easy to control that closure. We live on Summers. We don't get nearly the trick-or-treaters that Columbia get. We just kind of leave and go down to Columbia to see the show. It's like a theatrical show down there. And I don't mind. It seems like it's safe enough to park on Summers, and it would be great if people were able to park further out and not use Columbia and then walk in. Just safer for everybody, and because we have alleys in all of our neighborhood streets, and even the homeowners still have access to their homes if we close off Columbia. Oh, also, oh, also, I just think we're doing a disservice to the drivers. I think some of the drivers that aren't familiar with Halloween, that come in from out of the area, and they know to go down Columbia, and they look on Google, and they turn down there, they're like, "What the heck? Why isn't the street closed? I'm going to kill somebody while I'm out here." And you know what? It could happen. They could hit a kid, and they don't know that's... And we have a responsibility to close it for the driver's safety as well as the kids. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
I'm Paul McCann at 340 Summers. I'm Janice's husband. So I just agree with Ray, and I agree with Janice, of course. And I can only add one more point. These kids are on sugar. And they are running around, so it'd be really nice to do it. But why I'm here, I just want to thank you, guys. You know, our neighborhood is just super fantastic, and we're really happy with it. We like it. The city and the staff and the planning boards and different things have just done a wonderful job of making a really nice neighborhood. And, you know, Columbia, they have those, you know, the beautiful trees, and the arborist keeps them really nice, and there's those bump outs and under corners. It's just a very attractive thing, and we appreciate that. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Paul.
Hello, my name is Nicole Harris. I live on 425 Columbia Avenue, and I've lived there since 2012 and been participating in Halloween. It would be great if we could close Columbia just to have more of a community and safe environment, so we'd really appreciate it if you would help us make our community enjoy it more and just have less traffic and be able to converse with our neighbors. And we host Kalispell, Columbia Falls, and Whitefish Trick-or-treaters. The last trick-or-treat count at my house was 1326, so it would really be great if we could just be a community and enjoy that time and not have to worry about traffic on Columbia. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Nicole.
Hello, my name is Keegan Sebenoller. I live at 306 Lutford Avenue, and I'm speaking today as the Policy Director for Shelter WF, and we want to register our really grave concern with the direction of the Planning Commission. So we're now a pretty significant way into the growth policy process, and the city has done quite a bit of work to make sure that a broad swath of the public is engaged. But over and over, the voice of both the city and the community is just being rewritten by the Planning Commission's narrow interests. The Planning Commission pretty clearly has shown disrespect for the time and work of city staff for public comment and public visioning sessions, and their process isn't timely or efficient. I'll tell you one anecdote that I experienced personally, which refers to the August meeting of the Planning Commission that reviewed the line-by-line edits to the Economic Development Chapter. So nine or 10 community members made public comment within the allotted time at the beginning of the meeting, with the majority of the comments supporting the original draft created by the city. But throughout the meeting, after the public comment was over, the Planning Commission would ask questions to one particular member of the public for their input while the rest of us sat quietly. And I'll tell you that not many members of the community that took their time to show up to that meeting felt like their feedback was valued by the city. And incidents like this have been common for the Planning Commission this year with the growth policy. And, you know, right on this lectern, it has the principles for civil dialogue, and I want to point out a few. We are responsible for respectful and courteous dialogue and participation. We respect diverse opinions as a means to find solutions based on common ground. We value informed decision-making and take personal responsibility to educate and be educated, and we encourage and value broad community participation. The Planning Commission has not fulfilled these principles for civil dialogue, and I think the City Council now finally has the chance to take some action. For Shelter WF, we see the transportation, land use, and housing elements as ones where broad community participation is super important and will create a pretty different draft of the growth policy than the Planning Commission will. So why we're all coming to you now and talking about kind of the work the Planning Commission has done and where we see it as deficient is that these important sections are coming through. Transportation will probably come to the Planning Commission in November, and the way that they've been handling themselves won't create a very good growth policy draft. So, yeah, I just urge that you consider those, considering that the City Council now has the power to appoint members to the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Keegan.
Hi, my name is Marty Brandt. I'm at 575 Armory Road. I'm here echoing Keegan's concerns. I'm concerned by the behavior of the Planning Commission in reviewing our growth policy. Just as a note of clarification, most commission members are fine. They might vote in ways that I don't like, but I'm okay with that. I'm okay with feeling disappointed in the outcome. What I'm not okay with is people who seem so rigidly obsessed with implementing their vision that it feels like they're undermining the integrity of the process as a whole. I have written a pretty long letter detailing a lot of the issues for the sake of time and interest. I won't go into all of that. I know a lot of those things kind of walk a fine line on legality, but I would ask, is legality the only standard that we have? In a professional setting, a lot of these actions would get you fired. In council meetings, I've heard our city manager, I've heard city council members say that they try to intervene, and nothing comes of it, so I'm unsure who answers to who. Back in June, we faced this issue, and we kicked it down the road a bit, hoping that some timing guidelines would resolve the issue. But every meeting presents the same, sometimes new, ethical problems, and they break the public's trust in the process. Even last week's sewer meeting left me with some questions, and we really can't wait any longer to address this issue. If what I've written in that big old long letter doesn't seem pressing to you, then please consider your own time. Every meeting compounds the same problems and creates new ones. Revisiting sections over and over leads to more extensive revisions, and y'all are going to have to look through those at the end of this process. You'll have to sort through some of these ideas that have been implemented that feel a lot like a weird wish list, and they're not things that are actually actions we can implement in our growth policy. I do believe that all commission members want what is right for our community, but I think for some people, what that means is, once again, this really rigid version of like exactly this, and they'll do anything to try and stick to that really rigid version. It feels harsh to me to ask that people be removed. I don't really see another way. I've advocated probably ad nauseam here about like really rigid, rigid guidelines. I don't know if that's a path, but anyway. I just, to reiterate, the longer you wait, the more people lose faith in this process, and I think everyone here has probably had that experience where your trust in something is broken, and it's very, very hard to regain that. I'm not sure if this is a point that you guys are concerned with or not, but I do think it needs to be said that our staff is working incredibly hard. They are so knowledgeable. I learn something from them in every meeting, pretty much. They deserve our utmost respect, and I don't think they are being given that. So where we draw this line, it defines like what we stand for, and I believe that we're a city that stands for equal standards, transparency, respect, and we have to draw that line soon, or all of these values will be undermined. So that's all. Thank you.
Folks, if we could just refrain from applauding, I'd certainly appreciate it. Understand, these are emotional topics and times, but I appreciate that. Thank you. Nathan?
All right. Hey, guys. Nathan Dugan, 937 Kalispell Avenue, here today also to kind of address the current process of drafting Whitefish's new land use plan, and more specifically, the conduct of the Planning Commission during that drafting process has been going on for some time now. So for those in the room or listening online that don't know, this plan will kind of guide our city's growth over the next 20 years. It's pretty important, but I feel like the current path is actively undermining a lot of the change that our community wants and needs. And I understand that you guys can fix that after the fact, but I think getting you guys a more complete draft would be super helpful. So I've attended countless Planning Commission meetings, including last week, a two-and-a-half-hour session to review and approve five pages of text on water and sewer. So a half hour per page, on average, for the math. And this is a big part of the problem. The sheer length and frequency of these meetings, which are now up to at least twice a month, are leading to significant public disengagement, in my opinion. I'd have to guess that the staff time spent in these meetings is also negatively impacting the city's other work. You know, I don't know how much time they're flexing for the multiple hours they're spending in these meetings, but that's time that they're not able to do the other, the city's other work. Apart from a few well-attended visioning sessions over the past couple of years, it's kind of the same few people, I'm included in that, that tend to show up to these commission meetings and most city meetings, for that matter. So I'm one of those people, not knocking anybody for being the people that show up, but it's something I've noticed. Crucially, the public feedback collected during the more widely attended visioning sessions, especially from what I've seen from some of the younger residents that were able to attend those sessions, pushing for affordability and quality-of-life improvements is not really carrying through into the draft document. The commission's current process is ignoring wide swaths of the community, instead giving outsized drafting power to a select few members of the commission and the public. And so my deeper concern there is the appearance of impropriety in the commission's overall conduct during the meetings. This is actually a different example than Keegan gave earlier. It was a different meeting, but there's one especially dedicated member of the public who's frequently in attendance at these meetings, and in my view, he's effectively participating as an informal commissioner, despite applying for and not being appointed as a commissioner on that commission earlier this year. This person's been permitted by the commission recently, especially to engage in kind of hours of dialogue outside of the designated public comment periods in the meetings, even directing questions to staff. This format, which has been disguised as a work session, is not applied evenly to members of the public, and, in my opinion, creates a skewed, one-sided view of the issues. The optics of this are also terrible, and the lack of impartiality kind of poisons the whole process. So the council has kind of already reprimanded the commission at least once, yet their conduct has not changed. We've continued to see hostility and accusatory behavior directed towards city staff. I believe certain members of the commission are actively obstructing positive changes that would increase housing affordability and improve our quality of life, changes that many people expressed in the community through the visioning sessions. The current makeup of the commission has not proven itself capable of taking an unbiased view while drafting this critical document, and it's not good enough for this council to clean up the inevitable mess after the fact. We're about to enter the most contentious and vital chapters of the new plan: transportation, land use, and most importantly, housing. I just asked that you would take some action today to ensure that the commission's membership is capable of completing its work with integrity and impartiality. This council must restore faith in the process by ensuring that the entirety of the community is represented within this long-term plan, and I leave it up to you guys to do that however you see fit. But thank you.
Thanks, Nathan.
Hey, everyone. I'm Leonette Galaz. Many of you still know me. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. My address is 121 Mill Avenue, Unit B, and that's here in Whitefish. I moved back. So, but I'm also here speaking on behalf of, as a leader and a founder of Flathead Democracy, which many of you are very aware of. The reason I'm here today is to ask the City Council to protect the integrity of the public input process in the growth policy plan by removing individuals from the Planning Commission who are subverting the public input process and dishonoring the public input process. We, with Flathead Democracy, are standing on the side of upholding direct democracy, which public input really is like a form of direct democracy, and preventing any damage to the reputation of democracy in the Flathead. As you can guess by our name, those two words, Flathead Democracy, both very important to us, democracy in the Flathead Valley. If the public input of the people truly doesn't matter, they will not participate in public input processes, and rightly so. Why would they? Right? So I'm here today to ask you to make this right, fix it, do what's needed as quickly as possible before further damage is done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Simon Rostin. I live at 306 Lutford. I'm also here to kind of echo what they're saying, but I'm not particularly involved in politics in Whitefish. I just moved back. I just finished college, but it's really hard to move back. None of my friends did. I'm the only one left. So, and the reason for that is because it's unaffordable. It's really hard to live here. I had to go off to college, get a fancy schmancy job, and it's not even in town, because all my friends who do work in town move to Kalispell because that's what they can afford. And me and my remote job luckily managed to live in Whitefish, but it's really hard, and I don't like that reality, and I would love my friends to live closer to me. So that's why I'm here today. It seems to me like I want to get involved, right? Like, I want to, I'm here. I've got other things I could be doing right now, but I'm not going to be involved, just like she was saying, if it's pointless. And if there are people who are set up in the structures of this government that are going to make it so the actual public can't have an input, then why would I care? And truthfully, I want to be in Whitefish. I want to care. I want to fight for that, but everyone's just going to end up disenchanted and not caring, just like she was saying. And if we're going to have groups like the Planning Commission, who aren't actually there to listen to the people of Whitefish, who are just there to stand up for the people who already have money, who move here with fancy houses and can afford to retire here, I would love to retire here, but I'd also like to live here my whole life, and hopefully that's a world that we can all keep building. And it seems to me, from everything I've heard and everything I've read, that the Planning Commission is against that. Thanks.
Thanks, Simon. Welcome back.
Welcome back. For the record, Z418 East Second Street in Whitefish. Before I begin my comment, I will take a moment to honor the beautiful women I have lost to breast cancer and domestic lost to breast cancer and domestic violence. Okay. As I am in my activist era, I need to address some council members' comments from the previous meeting. First, Steve, I hope that the inaugural Freedom Week was a success. Unfortunately, one local student, 17-year-old Fergie, spent her Freedom Week languishing in an ICE detention facility in Texas, where as of today, she remains awaiting deportation. Segue to Rebecca's inquiry of Bridger regarding my request for Whitefish Police Department to limit their cooperation with Customs and Border Patrol. New news. As of October 1st, Montana House Bill 278 empowers state and local law enforcement agencies to conduct immigration status searches. Woo! Now, along with the Supreme Court's ruling, there is no need for anyone to wear a yellow star. Brown skin will provide sufficient probable cause. Yay. I'll end with this. City Council, you dropped the ball with Be Care. You dropped the ball with Pride Month, but the third time's the charm. The city of Whitefish, as was mentioned earlier, has welcomed a retail store with the charming racist name of Kemosabe. Well done. October 13th is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Be bold, city of Whitefish. Issue an official proclamation that honors a marginalized community. Our children are watching. As Pete Seeger sang, "Which side are you on? Which side are you on?" Thank you.
Thanks, Z. Further public comment tonight? Any volunteer board report? Volunteer board report? Thanks, Nathan.
Nathan Dugan back here as the Chair of our Climate Action Plan Committee here. So last week, week before, I think, we sent you an email, but we challenged you last week to all participate in the Week Without Driving for a week or for a day or even just for a single trip. This nationwide challenge took place last week between September 29th and October 5th. And as policymakers, your decisions impact the mobility of people within our community. So the Week Without Driving is a chance to understand daily life for the many people who cannot drive due to age, disability, income, or other barriers. And I'll be the first one to admit that I drove a lot more last week than I would have liked to. Had to do some meetings with not a lot of time in between them in Kalispel and Columbia Falls. Other time crunches, the weather was not great last week, and doing some patient care as a home health physical therapist as well. Hard to carry that bag around and not have a car. But I was able to make quite a few trips downtown and to my office by walking or using a scooter, which is how I normally travel around when the weather's nice. One obvious issue in Whitefish during this past week is that the snow bus isn't running during that time. So that makes it a lot more difficult to get around our city without a car, especially when the weather's less than ideal for being outside. So I hope that you all were able to participate at least a little bit, and I hope that some of you might share some of your stories or insights about the challenge later on tonight, if you did. But yeah, thank you for your time and thanks for reading our email on that.
Appreciate it. Public comment? Okay.
Hi, I'm Bella. Bella Brown. I wanted to retweet that being brown. This really sucks right now. Just FYI, but that's, I came here mostly because I heard about the Growth Development Plan, and I usually try to make it accessible as possible for young people to get engaged in their civic responsibility. And I live in Whitefish, and I would say, I actually know least about what's happening with the growth, like savings plan outreach on that. And I would love, like, I don't know if it's on their website or something, but I would just, would love to know if you're going to go to any events, if what your plan for that is. But also, while I was hearing that, I also heard about the public transportation, and I can confirm, it's awful in the valley. I had to go to Kalispel to, I had to get my car fixed, and it was a whole thing. And I remember like looking at it and just like, this is insane. Who has time to go three hours just to get like, go down just to have to come back up a different way? It was just, I don't know, it's crazy. This is like the worst public transportation I've ever seen in my life, respectfully. But I would love to input that in the future, like plans and stuff, but it's not really accessible, and I would love to fix that. And yeah, Indigenous Peoples' Day is Monday, so that's it.
Thanks, Bella. Appreciate it. Michelle, anyone online wishing to provide comment?
Mayor Melfeld, Council. We need to restart the IT system for our Zoom members to be able to speak. It is being recorded, so while they haven't been able to hear, we're going to take a two-minute reset of that system.
Would you like us to pause in the interim?
Yes, please.
Thanks, Dana. We'll go ahead and recess for about two to three minutes, and we'll reconvene.